To call the Crystal Council meeting to order, let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Vanessa Rosen.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Eible.
Here.
We have a form.
All right, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us, looking for a motion on that agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, looking for a second. Tracy?
Um, I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, we do have a couple proclamations today. I will read those into the record. First proclamation is recognizing Flag Day for 2024, whereas on June 14th, 1777, a second Continental Congress passed a resolution calling for the design of our nation's flag and the christening of our flag icon stripes stars on a field of blue. And whereas on May 30th, 1916, President Woodrow Wilson issued a proclamation suggesting and requesting that throughout the nation, and if possible, in every community, the fourteenth day of June be observed as Flag Day with special patriotic exercises. And whereas on August 3rd, 1949, Congress approved the national observance of Flag Day and President Harry Truman signed into law. And whereas we celebrate Flag Day across the United States on June 14th each year to honor the United States' flag and to commemorate the flag's adoption. This is a day set aside for Americans and Crystal residents to reflect on the foundations of the nation's freedom. And whereas while the American flag has gone through many changes over the centuries, has seen many battles and has earned many tears and scars and tatters, it remains a symbol of hope and enduring symbol for our country's ideals since its early days. And whereas the flag of the United States represents freedom and when we honor our flag, we honor what we stand for as a nation and a community: freedom, equality, justice, and hope. Whereas the flag of the United States, nope, I'm sorry, skipped. Now therefore I, Jim Adams, Mayor of Crystal, do hereby proclaim that June 14th, 2024, is recognized as Flag Day and I encourage all the residents of Crystal to honor that day proudly by displaying the American flag at their poems and businesses and to rededicate themselves to the ideals for which the flag stands. They did this fourth day of June, 2024. Our second proclamation is a fairly, fairly new holiday that we have. It's recognizing Juneteenth, 2024. Whereas recognizing Juneteenth and what it stands for directly relates to the city's efforts to be more welcoming and inclusive community. And whereas June 19th has a special meaning in America and is called Juneteenth, a combination of the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated by Americans for over 150 years. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest national celebrated commemoration of the ending of the slaves in the United States. It has been celebrated under many names, including Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Second Independence Day, Emancipation Day. And whereas Emancipation Proclamation was issued January 1st, 1863. However, notice of the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was not received in Galveston, Texas until the Union General Gordon Granger traveled to announce the general order on June 19th, 1865. Whereas Juneteenth became a federal holiday on June 17th, 2021. And in 2023, Minnesota's 93rd Legislature formally established Juneteenth as a state-recognized holiday. And whereas our African-American residents' freedom contributions and achievements are acknowledged as part of our American history. Now therefore I, Jim Adams, the Mayor of Crystal, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2024, as recognition of Juneteenth Freedom Day in Crystal and history's contribution to and achievements of African-Americans in Crystal and in the United States are recognized. They did this fourth day of June, 2024. That is our proclamations for the day. Next, we have Deputy Chief Brian Hubbard here to address the council in relationship to our explorers. So welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to be in front of you. Oftentimes, we're coming in front of you recognizing officers for different accomplishments. And tonight, we get to deviate from that a little bit and recognize a different group for some great accomplishments. As most of you know, the Crystal Police Department has had an explorer post for a number of years. I'll just call it COVID time. We decided as numbers were dwindling that we hit pause on that. In the fall of last year, as we looked to reinvigorate that program, we partnered with New Hope and Robbinsdale to start a tri-city explorer post up. And so we have all three cities represented. And so these guys jumped in to be a part of the post. If you're not familiar with Police Explorers, it's a program for young adults and really intended to help you understand what a career in law enforcement looks like, the skills that are involved in that, as well as leadership and community service, which is what these guys have done. They meet every week throughout the year. And each week is some type of a training aspect. And so they learn all of the things that police officers do. They get lots of opportunities to practice and do that. They also are involved in community events. They volunteer for different events. They take the lead on Shop with the Cop for us. So they are an unsung group of our team that you see. Typically, the explorer year around the state culminates with a annual conference down in Rochester, which happened in mid-April. There were 80 teams from around the state that were represented, about 300 different explorers. And they, besides having fun and a lot of pool time, is what I was told when I was down there. They compete against other teams in all of the different areas that they've been training towards. And so our teams came back with some hardware, which is what we're here to recognize them for. And so the team, I'm going to have you guys just raise your hands. But so Team A. All right, Carson Lilly and, okay, and who else?
Trey.
And Trey. They got fifth placed in traffic stops against all of the other folks in the state. And then Team B, Luke, Samario, GC, am I saying that right? Sorry, and Emily, they got fifth place in crime prevention. And so again, when you figure that they are, they're up against folks from all over the state, that's pretty good. And then Luke also got second place in the airsoft shooting competition that they were a part of. So these guys love some hardware. They worked really hard to get themselves ready for that spot. And what I'm told from the advisors is that they worked really hard to get themselves to that point and impressed everybody. I also want to recognize that we have a couple of our explorer advisors who take this on as an additional assignment, in addition to their regular duties, to lean in on these guys and help invest in them. And so we've got Officer Robles from Crystal, Officer Small, and Officer Sisk from Robbinsdale as part of the group. Officer Sisk also took some hardware home. They do a little competition with the advisors and he took a top shot competition for his shooting. So I'd be remiss in not calling that out. But we're super proud of this group. They represented our organization very well. And as you can see, they're a good-looking group and we're excited for everything that they've done. So I present them to you, and I told them that you may have a question or two for them. So if anybody does, I will turn that over to you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Questions from the council?
I have a question.
John's usually.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So is this everybody in the explorer class for this?
Everybody but one.
One, one, okay. So we do have one person missing. And I just want to say, I mean, when you go through these competitions, I take a lot of pride in the fact that you guys come back with the hardware. I mean, I know from years past, you know, our explorer group has always done rather well. So it's, thank you very much. I appreciate your efforts and your hard work and all the other things you do as well, because we have the frolics coming up and I know you guys have a big active part in that as well. So I just want to say thank you right now. Thank you very much. A round of applause.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nice job. Nice job. Good job. Good job.
So this was the first year in reform, or reformation?
This was the first year that we had the combined post.
Yeah. And then the year before, we weren't in existence?
Yeah, I think our last year was in 2019. The old post, we, 19 was the last year. So we took a couple years off and then reinvigorated.
Yeah. So you're bringing hardware back the first time. That's pretty impressive. Great leadership. Thank you, guys, for your extra time. Thank you for your willingness to participate in the explorers. That's it. All right, thanks.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, more?
Was it divided pretty equally amongst the three cities for the explorers?
I would say yes. I don't have the exact count, but I think we had, I know we had representation from all three cities. I don't know what the breakdown was of the nine students.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Hey, that's my job.
Unless you want to learn about budgets.
We've got another two hours, folks. You've got to stay.
Yeah, I'll be on. All right, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And on that is the approval of minutes from the following meetings, the Crystal Council Work Session on May 21st and the council meeting from that same date. And then a list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council that is on file in her office. Approval of the following 2024 Crystal Frolics items: Temporary closure of 46th Avenue and 47th Avenue from July 25th to the 28th. That's 2024, for the city and staff. Vehicle parking, shuttle buses, fireworks display, waterball competition. And then a permit for display of outdoor fireworks at Welcome Park on July 26th and 27th, 2024. And that was submitted by Hollywood Viral Technics, Inc. And then last item is a resolution reporting on state performance measures. Looking for a motion on this. David?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, looking for a second. Therese?
I'll second that.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, next is open forum. Open forum, the city council appreciates hearing from citizens about items of concerns and desires set sometime aside at each meeting for open forum to provide ample opportunity for all people speaking. We limit it to three minutes, 10 minutes per topic. And I, as presiding officer, may extend the time. By rule, no action may be taken on anything brought forth. However, it can be put on future agendas. So we do have, we do have someone wishing to speak, Jerome Johnson. Can you make sure you get that microphone so everybody can hear you?
Testing, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, thanks. Thank you very much for letting me come before you. As mentioned, my name is Jerome Johnson. I'm a retired transportation economist, for what that's worth. I am a research contributor and affiliated with the SLR 81, the Blue Line Extension folks who are seeking for communities along the route to withhold municipal extent. I come before you tonight. I've distributed a handout here. We wanted to get ahead of this with the Crystal, Robbinsdale City Councils, Brooklyn Park City Councils, in preparation for the more formal meetings that we hope unfold when municipal consent time comes around. In this handout, the top page basically summarizes the SLR 81 position. And there'll be a lot more said about that as we move on. The second page is really the heart of what we wanted to get at and why we wanted to get ahead of this with you. It's basically a set, it's a timetable. It's an operating schedule that we've put together for what has been proposed now by the Met Council. And it includes other routes for both the Blue Line Extension Light Rail on street over West Broadway and Botno. And I also include the original light rail system. The top especially, we've estimated transit times from Bass Lake Road and 281 to downtown Minneapolis. To the best of my knowledge, Met Council hasn't come up with anything yet like this after a couple years plus of moving to the new route. So we took it upon ourselves to come up with these estimates for not only, well, the various routes that the Met Council has proposed to get to downtown Minneapolis, plus the original Blue Line Extension route that was going to operate over the BNSF freight corridor. Time doesn't permit me to get into a lot of details here, but a couple quick points. You'll note that what's being proposed now down the middle of Botno, it's going to take almost twice as long to get downtown from Highway 81. It reflects two things. One, that Crystal got a real bad deal when discussions fell through on the BNSF corridor for a variety of reasons. So did Robbinsdale. It also shows you that you're not getting the same transportation product now that was on the table five years ago. And for $3 billion, it's a lot of money to move at half the speed that was originally promised. Down the right-hand column, I've taken and I've showed the existing transit product that you have. And maybe I'm missing something, but y'all have something of a transit desert here in Crystal. It takes 45 minutes to get downtown Minneapolis on metro transit. I've basically created three bus rapid transit options to cover the same routes as have been proposed by the Blue Line Extension. And the key takeaway is, really, for any of these bus rapid transit routes, they operate at or slightly faster than what Met Council is proposing. You're probably not hearing much on that score from them. But I basically benchmarked and reverse engineered these bus rapid transit numbers from what you see today from the C and D lines that are operating basically on a slower track than Botno and West Broadway would be. So to conclude, and by all means, scan the rest of this. Please get back to me if you have any questions or comments. We have other Robbinsdale and other origins here. But take a look and compare what a bus rapid transit does for 100-plus million to what Met Council is proposing for the Blue Line Extension at now $3 billion and counting. One final thing. Some of you may know George Selman, Councilman. George and I basically put together a slightly condensed version of this, which ran in Sun Post. I had a version of this running in the Strip about a couple of years ago on the opinion page. Take a look at that. It goes into a little more detail. And then hopefully, we can spend some more time with you down the line, getting into even greater detail on some of these other really vital issues.
All right.
Okay?
Jerome, where do you live?
I live, my address is in the Summit Hill neighborhood of St. Paul, 378 Summit. I own a home in Brooklyn Center. And I grew up in the area, graduate of Osseo High School.
All right. Thank you, Jerome.
You bet.
All right, was there anyone else wishing to speak during open forum? Seeing no, one, okay, one. Could you, did you fill out a yellow sheet? Feel free to come up and please tell us your name and your address. And then afterwards, please fill it out and give it to our city clerk.
My name is Scott Kenaisel. I live at 6916 58th Avenue. My main concern is the neighbor, not directly behind me, one house over. It was the house that had 124 cats. Three months ago, I had a cat that became sick and I had to put him down. I don't know if that's the cause, if he contacted a disease from one of their cats some way. But my main concern too is that there's people that are, I don't know if they're living in the house, staying in the house, it's inhabitable. This house in my eyes should be condemned. They were partying in the backyard last week, hooting, hollering, screaming, swearing, saying names, N-word, that I, you know, everything. It's like, I'm trying to sit in my backyard peaceful and they're out there hooting and hollering, having a good time in a house that's inhabitable. One of my main concerns is that, being a neighbor, why weren't we informed that this was a hazmat situation on the other side of the block from us? I think the code enforcer, whoever, needs to investigate this a little bit more. There's a dumpster in the front yard that's been there for over a month, full of who knows what. That could be hazardous. Their backyard is full of who knows what, totes and garbage and junk, and they're burning stuff. I don't know what they're burning. That could be hazardous. And it's just, I'm concerned about my health. My neighbors just had a baby a few months ago. They had a young kid. You know, what's the hazardous on this house? What can be done? I would like the city to step up and either determine whether this house needs to be condemned and tore down, or investigate why are people even inhabiting this house, even if they're in the backyard having a party when the house is inhabitable? They shouldn't be on the property at all unless they're doing construction, fixing it, doing whatever they're doing. But how can you rehab a house that's had 100-plus cats in there with the urine and the feces? There's no way. They need to investigate this house and determine what needs to be done with it. I'm concerned for my health. My neighbors are. I've talked with them. Everybody. It's a situation that needs to be addressed.
All right. So make sure you put your contact information on the yellow sheet. We'll have staff get back to you. I'm not sure if police will make any contact either. We'll see.
I did call the police the other night when they were out there hooting and hollering and swearing and everything else.
Okay, good.
And it's like, the policeman, I talked to him, he said, "They're not doing anything wrong." Yes, they are. The code enforcement, you look, noise code. No yelling, hooting, hollering, whistling, playing music as to disrupt your neighbors.
Okay.
Not in them exact words. I mean, it's in the code, if you look it up.
Right.
You know? And we're sitting in our backyard trying to have a peaceful night. It was beautiful out the other night. And we're listening to these people swearing and you know what.
Right. I hear you.
So.
Definitely.
This, this address needs to be checked out. It's 6911 Dudley Avenue. It's the house that had 124 cats.
We know which house.
So yes, this. So yes, this house, I mean, I'm talking urgent. Soon, something needs to be done because, especially with them burning, big clouds of smoke. I don't know what they're burning. You're not supposed to burn anything but firewood in an outdoor fire pit.
All right. Hopefully, staff will have some guidance for you.
I did report the issue the other day online. I did send an email, I don't know, on our website, reporting issue. I don't know who it goes to, but I did do that.
Okay.
I'm hoping to get answers because I don't want these people over there. They're causing trouble in our neighborhood. I've had trouble with other neighbors in our neighborhood. Fortunately, the rental properties, people have moved on, and we have better neighbors now. That's another issue. We have too many rental properties in our neighborhood.
All right. All right, anything else? No?
No, I just, I just, I hope the city steps up and helps me take care of this issue, so.
Okay.
Check in, you know, have code enforcement do whatever they have to do to find out what's in this house, if they're living there and they're not supposed to be.
Okay, we'll, we'll put staff on it. All right, anyone else wishing to speak during open forum? Seeing no one else approach or raise their hand or stand on their head or anything like that, we will close open forum. Next is a public hearing. We'll receive some comment. And the council will consider a new on-sale wine, beer, and Sunday liquor license for Gold Star Cafe, DBA as Lucky Pearl Cafe, and they're at 5600 56th Avenue North. Chrissy, our city clerk, is here to address the council. Welcome, Chrissy.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Mr. Liedau, Lee Side Two, has applied for a new on-sale wine, beer, and Sunday liquor licenses on behalf of Golden Star Cafe LLC, doing business as Lucky Pearl Cafe, located at 5600 56th Avenue North in Suite E for the licensing period of July.
Thank you.
July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. The property is on commercial and liquor stores are permitted use in that district. Staff has reviewed the liquor license application materials, and a background check was completed by the police department. Notice of tonight's public hearing was published in the May 23 Sun Post, as well as on Nextdoor within the surrounding neighborhoods. No correspondence has been received in regards to the new proposed licenses. Staff finds no reason to prohibit issuance of the licenses and recommends approval. And Liedau is in attendance at tonight's meeting.
All right. Any questions for Chrissy on this one? Seeing none.
My name's Liedau Lee Side Two.
Yep.
I live, now I live in Woodbury, Minnesota. But I just start business in Crystal here. So, just a small restaurant. And that restaurant never have alcohol before, but I try to sell beer, alcohol, and then try to get more customer.
All right. We're going to do a quick public hearing, see if there's anybody from the community who wishes us to speak. So we may call you afterwards again for further conversation and questions. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. You can have a seat for a second. All right, is there anyone wishing to make comments? All right, step forward.
Mayor, council. I'm not, this is Bert Orr at 6700 60th Avenue North. I'm not certain this is germane to the approval process. I'm familiar with the location, and I often keep an eye on it because we are in need of good Asian food. Now, the thing I have a difficulty with is that it seems like, I don't know when the guy is open. It seems very sporadic in his hours. Consequently, part-time liquor for part-time restaurant, as I said, it may not even be germane to the approval process. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bert. Anybody else wishing to speak during this public hearing? All right. You're welcome to step forward again. Yep. You don't. All right, any questions for Lee? Yeah, go ahead, John.
Hi, can you talk to us a little bit about your experience serving alcohol previously?
I, this is my first time selling alcohol. I used to help my sister at the liquor store sometimes, but this is my first application. I, what I do is just, I think I still need more study for class, but I know that every time, every young man, young people, you have to ask for ID, age.
So what you're telling me is that you have worked in an establishment before where you've sold alcohol and have, you have experience carding individuals to make sure that they're of age?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that correct? All right. And then are you aware that we also have training through the city for the sale of alcohols to help you in terms of making sure that that there isn't any issues in terms of selling to underage individuals? Are you aware of that, sir?
As Chrissy advised me, I have to contact for selling alcohol class, so it's just getting process, progress. I'm not done the class yet.
Okay, and I have one last question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then what do you have for tools to help individuals that work in your restaurant to make sure that they follow the guidelines for the sale of alcohol to of-age individuals? What type of tools do you have?
Like, what kind of tool, like?
Do you scan the ID? Do you, do you, do you have like calendars telling you when, you know, to look at? Do you realize that there's two different kinds of IDs for individuals who are of age and those who are not? I mean, do you have any, any of that type of information available for your, for yourself and for your employees?
I don't have yet, but as I know, 21 years of age can have, can drink alcohol, so. I don't have much employee. I don't, we only have me and my wife and sister. I should tell them that don't sell to young people at, every, before you ask for the age or ID. Check for the age.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would really hope that you would take advantage of the service that we have, get some additional training, making sure that you understand the laws and the things that can make things go smooth. We, when we go through this process, we really like to have this be like the only time that you come here, unless you're promoting your business. Oftentimes, people with alcohol licenses, they come by because they have failed a test. We send out compliance, we do compliance checks. And oftentimes, liquor stores or restaurants, we see them after they've failed. So we want to make sure that you're equipped. There's fines, there's suspensions that go along with that. Make sure that you're well-aware, make sure everybody who's working in the, in the restaurant knows what those are. And we really want you to take that very, very serious as we move forward in this process. Yeah.
Just to be really clear, we do not expect that you only card people or check the ID of people that look young, but everyone should be IDed at your establishment. So I just want to be really clear like that. That's my expectation. I think that's the expectation of kind of the law there. I, so I'm curious, and this isn't a question for you necessarily, but I don't know, I think there may be some opportunity to really be clear on what, what the processes or tools are to ensure that IDs are being checked properly, considering this is your first time applying for a liquor license. And I don't, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to say this, but I don't know if I'm supportive of this right now without, you know, some kind of documented training that you've gone through. And obviously, that's not an expectation for someone to apply. But just to kind of share where my head is at, I would maybe request that personally before, before I would be comfortable approving the license. So I'm just sharing that's, that's where I'm at.
All right. Any other comments? All right, looking for a motion.
I can make that motion.
John.
I make a motion to approve the on-sale wine, bicker, beer, on-sale wine, beer, Sunday liquor license for Golden Star Cafe LLC, doing business as Lucky Pearl Cafe, located at 5600 56th Avenue North.
All right, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Idbo.
Aye. Yay.
Councilmember Kamish.
Nay.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Onessa Rosen.
Nay.
Motion carries five to two.
All right. So it's, again, we're just gonna, we're gonna be as honest as we can with you. We're concerned that you'll be back again under bad circumstance. Please make sure you use our folks to help make sure you, you don't come back under those conditions. So beyond that, thank you for your, for your restaurant and our community. We love the fact that our businesses are here, your business is here, and other restaurants as well. So we look forward to enjoying your restaurant and food that you serve.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the dispersments of $25,000 or greater. I'll read those into the record at this time. Met Council, wastewater services for June, $143,220. U.S. Aquatics for state pool drawing review and pool design number three, $41,230. Waste management, HRG for New Hope Brooklyn Center in Crystal. April recycling, $77,556. Core and main LP for radio upgrades for the, for project, for project, rate project, $77,760. Bergen KDB for 2023 audit progress billing, $30,000 even. Men pair for employee and city required contributions for payday five, 24, 24. IRS electronic payments for federal and FICA withholding taxes for payday five, 10, 2024 is $69,952. Dispersments of $25,000 or greater total amount is $513,579.62. Are there any questions on any of these items from the council? Seeing no questions, looking for a motion. John?
So moved.
All right, looking for a second. Therese?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next, we have financial report for 2023. And Aaron Dahl is here to address the council.
Thank you, mayor and members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm Aaron Dahl, Audit Manager with Bergen KDB. All right, we'll start with pieces of the audit. First, with the independent auditors' report. So just to run through things here quick. Management is responsible for the financial statements. Us as auditors are responsible to express an opinion on the financial statements. And for 2023, we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we can give as auditors. So a great job by the finance team and the city staff to achieve that again this year. With that opinion, we're providing assurance that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. We also issued some reports. The first one with the report on Minnesota legal compliance, and happy to report no compliance findings reported again for 2023. We also issued a report on government auditing standards. We did have one finding there related to the lack of segregation of accounting duties. It's a finding that the city has had in the past. And basically, it boils down to there's not enough staff for the city to have that complete segregation of duties. So it's definitely a common finding that we issue in our reports, and it's not always cost-efficient or practical to have that complete segregation. So nothing of concern that came up, but it is something that we do like to note in our reports. And then lastly, we have the communications letter. And with that, we have a couple of pieces related to required communication, and then financial analysis. And I'll focus the majority of my presentation here tonight on some of that financial analysis. All right, starting with the general fund fund balance. So we have the past five years presented up above. At the end of 2023, fund balance was about 6.1 million, which was a decrease of about 5.9% compared to the prior year. We do have the components of the fund balance shown above on the screen. The unassigned balance is about 5.1 million for 2023. That's where the majority of the decrease occurred. And then we also have the non-spendable balance, which relates to prepaid items and inventory, and then also the committed balance for compensated absences. And both of those remained relatively consistent for 2023. Next, we have the fund balance as a percentage of the budget. So the city adopted a budget for 2024, which called for an increase in expenditures of about 13.5% compared to the 2023 budget. The fund balance at the end of 2023 as a percentage of that subsequent budget is shown on the chart. It is the city's policy to maintain unassigned fund balance for cash flow reserves equal to 45% of the budget for the subsequent year. As you can see kind of in that final box there, it was at about 25% at the end of 2023. And I will kind of discuss some of those steps to increase fund balance on the next slide related to specific transfers and long-term planning. Here we have the general fund budget for 2023. The council did approve a balanced budget for the year, so anticipating no change in fund balance based on the budget side of things. Actual results, the revenues were over budget by 0.7%, while the expenditures were 2.8% over budget. Taking a look at those individual pieces, the revenues in total came in about $137,000 over the budgeted amounts. The largest variance there was in the taxes and assessments category, which was about $309,000 under budget based on collections coming in less than anticipated. That variance was offset by the intergovernmental revenue category, which was over budget by about $129,000, with the city receiving funding for police and fire state aids, along with some federal grants as well being over budget there. The other revenue category was over budget by about $156,000 based on stronger investment returns in 2023. And then licenses, permits, fines, and charges for services were also over budget by about $161,000, due in part to increased building and mechanical permits. On the expenditure side, that was, were about $499,000 over budget for 2023. Park and recreation expenditures were about $518,000 over budget, based on utility costs and some tree removal services coming in higher than budgeted. Public safety was about $195,000 over budget related to higher-than-anticipated expenditures for benefits, vehicle repair requirements, and also some operating supplies. With that kind of change in fund balance, as you can see, of deficit of about $382,000. A transfer of $391,000 from the buildings fund will be made to offset the utility costs in 2024. So that will absorb some of those utility costs projected in the long-term plan for transparency sake. And then for those individual departments, the costs will remain in each cost center of the general fund and will be evaluated each year to determine the amount of transfer from the building fund after year ends. So that shouldn't be an issue kind of moving forward. Next, we have the general fund revenues for the past five years shown above. Total revenues were about $17.6 million in 2023, which was an increase from about $16.2 million in 2022. The largest increase here occurred in the property tax category with an increase of about 902,000 based on the tax levied for the general fund. And then also the other revenue category again increased by about 493,000 for the year, based primarily on investment earnings being higher in 2023 compared to 2022. The next chart here, we have some pie charts kind of displaying the general fund expenditures based on each of the programs. They're nearly identical from 2022 to 2023 with some of the same percentages. Public Safety remains the highest at nearly 50% in each of the years presented. Continuing with the general fund expenditures for the past five years here. For 2023, they did increase by about 651,000 or 3.6% compared to the prior year. Parks and Recreation increased by about 329,000 with increased salary and benefit expenditures, those tree removal services and then the building internal service charges, repair and maintenance needs and then also utility costs. And then Public Safety expenditures increased by about 280,000 with higher salary and benefit costs based on staffing, along with some additional internal technology, internal service charges. Expenditures for the general government actually decreased by about 120,000 for the year with less salaries and benefits and professional service costs noted for that program. Next, we'll jump into the enterprise funds and starting with the Water Enterprise Fund. Operating revenue for this fund increased by about 517,000 for the year with higher rates and increased consumption. Operating expenses increased by about 173,000 for the year with noted increases for water charges for 2023. The end result was operating income of about 1.8 million, which was an increase of about 344,000 compared to the prior year. And then we also have the net income, which does include non-operating revenues and expenses as well. And it was noted that was the highest in 2023 of the five years presented and increased by about 633,000 for the year. The Sanitary Sewer Fund, again, similar graphs here. Operating revenue increased by 264,000 for the year with increased billing rates on that fund. The operating expenses also increased by about 60,000 with increased charges and building internal service charges for the year. Operating income was 900,000 and increased by about 204,000 for the year. So again, each of the past five years has shown an operating income for the sewer fund. Next, we have the Storm Drainage Fund. Pretty consistent results here. The operating revenue did increase by about 29,000 with operating expenses decreasing by about 6,000. So pretty stable on that front. The net income piece did increase by about 141,000 and a lot of that was based on increased investment earnings allocated to the Storm Drainage Fund. And then lastly, we have the Street Lights Utility Fund, pretty similar to Storm Drainage, pretty consistent for the year. Operating revenue did increase by 16,000 while the expenses increased by about 3,000. The net income for that one did increase by 74,000, which again tied a lot into those investment earnings. We do have some per capita revenue and expenditure trend here. Typically, we do compare this to kind of the state averages for the population sizes. That data actually isn't out yet for 2022, so we just have the city's data presented here. You can see increases in both the intergovernmental revenue and the property taxes per capita kind of based on the revenues we touched on earlier. And then the expenditures per capita did increase as well, jumping up from eight eleven to eight fifty-two based on the increase in expenditures and the slight decrease in population. Lastly, we have some tax figures. So tax capacity, the certified tax levy and then the city tax rate for each of the past five years. With the market values continue to climb, the city's tax capacity has increased from 2022 to 2023 by about 3.4 million or about 13.3%. With that taxable market value increasing at a faster rate than the certified tax levy over the past five years, the city's tax rate has dropped from about 47.6% in 2019 down to 46.4% in 2023. So pretty stable over the past four years, but has seen a bit of a decrease compared to 2019 based on those increased market values. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions or comments the council may have.
All right, questions? Forrest?
Could you talk a little bit? I don't remember that last slide being on last year's presentation. Could you talk a little bit about the importance and like kind of extrapolate on why this slide is on here?
Sure. So yeah, it just kind of takes a look at the different pieces of kind of the tax portion. So kind of that top line shows the tax capacity, which is based on the market value of the properties throughout the city. The bottom line does show the certified tax levy. So you tend to kind of see those move up at a pretty similar rate. Obviously, you're going to tax a little bit higher as the market values go up. And then that middle percentage kind of is a comparative tool between the market value and then the tax levy. So the higher the percentage, kind of the more that you're taxing based on the market value. So as the value goes up, you can tax more, but if you're seeing that drop in percentage, it means there might be room to increase taxes based on kind of the prior four years. So just kind of gives you another metric to.
Okay, I guess what I was trying to say, like the trend here, you want the blue line to try and stays about the same, right?
It's, yeah, that's kind of up to council and.
Right, right.
Obviously, I'm not going to say one way or another if you should increase taxes or not. But as it's kind of consistent, you're seeing kind of similar increases from the market values and then the levy side of things. So obviously, you don't want to see a big spike in that percentage. That means you're kind of increasing taxes at a pretty high rate.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Tajee.
On that, is there kind of a standard or average tax rate that you see, a range maybe?
Yeah, I guess I'd have to kind of look back and kind of compare. Obviously varies by city based on market value. We do audits for Greater Minnesota as well, so obviously things can fluctuate. But I'd say kind of between that 40 and 50% is kind of a common range.
Yep, go ahead. I'm curious, Adam or Mayor, like do we have a perspective on that? Kind of what we would, I don't know, like.
That was not part of the conversation last year. I don't know historically if the city has put a lot of weight on the tax rate. I don't know. It's.
I haven't heard. I've been told that that's been.
Some cities do. Some cities, there are some cities that they maintain whatever the tax rate is, that's what they want to keep at. And if they're growing, then the levy goes up. So, but that's what they care about. There's others that they don't care about the rate. It's what the actual dollars and you know, the relation, the impact.
So I'll do my best to confuse it as much as possible. Tax rates have a very direct response to the valuation of the property in the community. And those in in the last couple decades, we've seen some pretty dramatic swings. And they have had a very dramatic effect on that particular percentage. So just because we haven't seen it in the last five years doesn't mean that it won't happen. So from my perspective, I feel that this is this is not a good gauge to decide whether or not we should be raising or lowering. At the end of the day, it's us trying to create a responsible budget based on what our needs are, what our services are. I mean, we could see, we could see a shift if commercial properties really do take a dive the next few years, which is oftentimes being projected. Our tax rate could go up. Is that accurate?
Yeah, yep, that makes sense.
That's accurate. And again, it's not because we've raised the taxes. Our pie is the same size as it always has been. It's just when you compare it to the valuation, you're going to get a different number. I hope that helped.
Yeah, I was just, the reason I asked is I never thought of this as a very particularly important number because your value, your house goes up, but it doesn't mean you're making more money, you know? And so it's kind of, I was just curious to see it as like the last slide.
Right.
Something I'm missing here.
Yeah, as Mayor Adams pointed out, it's not by any means an end-all decision maker. It's just kind of a metric to kind of show the comparison between the two and how they're kind of fluctuating over the past few years.
And to be more clear, it doesn't matter how much your house increases in value. It's how much it increases in comparison to commercial increasing or decreasing. All that plays.
Right, but this, this, this orange number is an aggregate. It's a total of all property in Crystal, right? I mean, it's, yeah, yeah. That difference is more in how much you pay. This is like, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'm used to bringing it back to the homes because that's who we are.
Right.
Sure. Go ahead, Tajee.
A question on the general fund fund balance as a percentage of budget slide. Unassigned fund balance, 25%. Total fund balance of 30%. And then did you say there's a, the expectation is 45%?
Yep.
And is that for the total fund balance?
That's for the unassigned.
Unassigned, okay.
That's our policy, right? That's.
Correct, yep, that's something that council can change if.
The state, the auditor's policy is 35, is that correct? Or what's the state?
Thirty-five to fifty.
Yeah, they kind of have.
Okay, so the base is 35, okay. Okay, thank you. All right, anything else?
Mayor, if I could just add, that was a point of discussion that we added the auditor.
Yep.
Because again, just, this is 2023. So all the budget discussion we had last year, about '24 and going forward, none of that's reflected. This budget, this budget year, the '23 budget year was set in '22. So we're looking back. So all the corrections that we made, the kind of the re-trad trajectory that we discussed last year, that's not reflected in here, so.
Decided to see that line go.
Yeah, yeah, well, it will.
That's why we had so much conversation last year.
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Looking for a motion? Anybody?
John, I can make that motion.
Yeah, it's okay.
I make a motion to accept the 2023 Annual Financial Report from Bergen KDB.
Looking for a second, David?
I will second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, Jody is here to give us an outlook on her budget preview for 2025. Welcome, Jody.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. For tonight's budget kickoff meeting, I wanted to provide a quick overview of the following. I will touch on the budget goals that provide the foundation. I will review the council goals that were established to provide the guiding principles of this budget process.
Thank you, Aaron.
Okay.
Keep going.
That's okay. There you go. Okay, perfect, thank you. I will do a quick review of the budget fundamentals. Will just be a refresher for many of you, but would like to do a review of these each year. I'll go over the budget timeline, which outlines the designated council meetings for the budget process. I will highlight some of the past year 2023 accomplishments and actually I'll turn that over to the city manager to do that. And I'll provide some high-level known facts about the upcoming budget. And at the end, we'll leave some time for council for comments. To start, I will review the budget goals that the city has developed. They include being able to meet the service demands of the community and also meet the demands of the legislative mandates, to continue with biennial budgeting, providing a two-year budget that demonstrates sound financial planning, to invest in capital needs for the community, including parks and street improvements, continue being committed to monitoring economic challenges and to provide competitive wages and benefits to retain quality staff to deliver the city's services to the community. This next slide here, I'll go over the council goals that serve as the primary drivers for guiding the city initiatives, which are providing a thriving business climate, creating strong neighborhoods, developing sound financial policies and communicating those to the community and building a welcoming and inclusive community. So each year, we provide a brief overview of fund accounting that provides the foundation for the financial information that will be presented in the upcoming months. Fund accounting is a method of separating the revenues and expenditures into different categories. Think of it as a tracking mechanism for grouping similar business functions together. There are three different categories of funds, governmental funds, proprietary funds and fiduciary funds. The first listed on this slide is the governmental funds. These funds are used to account for activities primarily supported by taxes, grants and similar sources of revenue. Proprietary funds are used to account for activities that are primarily supported by user-based fees rather than the levy dollars. The modified accrual method is used for accounting in the governmental funds, which is different than the accrual method used for the proprietary funds, which is full accrual. So what does that mean? The primary differences between these accounting methods are that you do not capitalize assets or accrue certain long-term liabilities like debt in the modified accrual. Revenues are recognized when they become available and measurable and expenditures are recognized in the period they are incurred. The last category here is fiduciary funds, which are basically accounting for monies held for other parties, which for the city of Crystal is the Hennepin Recycling Group. Based on the uniform chart of accounts from the Minnesota Office of the State Auditor, the category of funds are assigned specific blocks of numbers to help identify the type of fund they are within the accounting systems. You can see within each category of funds, I've listed the primary difference for the tracking of revenue and expenditures that go into each of these types of funds that will serve as a reference point if you need it in the future. It's helpful when reviewing the financial reports and I'm not sure why the 500s aren't showing up there. I think they were on my slide, but it might have gotten squished a little bit. But those 500 funds are the proprietary. Should be the proprietary funds there. We, this will be posted on the website and I'll make sure that that gets fixed too.
Just appeared.
What's that?
It just appeared.
Oh, there it is. So it's the internal service funds and the enterprise funds that are listed. Both of those funds are considered the proprietary funds. So as mentioned previously, when budgeting for governmental funds like the general fund and the special revenue funds, you'll want to give consideration to the following. Revenues such as state aid, grants, property taxes, licenses and the expenditures such as new programs or services, operating supplies, wages and benefits. So this slide simplifies the revenue sources between categories. As you can see, the property tax levy is the primary source of revenue in the general funds, special revenue funds, debt service levies and capital levies, whereas the user fees are typically determined by the utility rate study and it's the primary source of revenue for utility funds. So indicated here is just a snapshot of the proposed timeline for budget council meetings. There are nine meetings and work sessions scheduled. And here, it's important to take a look at the past accomplishments of the city that the previous budget was able to support. There are quite a few things that the city should be proud of that was accomplished for the community. And here's a list of the major accomplishments and I'll turn it over to the city manager to highlight a few of these.
Thank you, Jody, Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple items I wanted to highlight, I'm not going to go through all of them. But the fact that we, as a city, do 53 city council and work session meetings, I put that on there because it, that is where we spend a lot of time talking about everything important in the city. I mean, that is a lot of time that staff spends preparing it. You know, I actually didn't know what that number was until I counted them. I actually didn't know what that number was until I counted them all up, just, it's just twenty-twenty-three. But that, that's a sig- that, that demonstrates the amount of work that the city puts into running the city, um, from the policy standpoint with the council. There's a lot of conversation and discussion that goes into everything, um, part of that being the budget. Uh, what, another thing that we should be proud of is we had, uh, we counted up seven ribbon cuttings last year, uh, in the community development area. Moving on to the police, um, a lot of things to mention, but one, a couple of things I wanted to highlight, uh, we had a fourteen percent increase in calls and twenty-four percent increase in traffic stops, a thirty percent increase in traffic citations, and nineteen percent increase in cases being, uh, referred to investigations. That, that has, as you saw in the audit presentation, you know, half of our budget is, half of our expenditures is public safety. A significant portion of that, we talked about the fire earlier tonight, the other, kind of the other part of that is, uh, law enforcement, and we, we are increasing our activity there, but with that, there is a cost, um, to maintain that. With the fire specifically, uh, one thing to highlight, the, we just found out, um, just this last week, that our ISO rating for the district, uh, area, uh, increased from a three rating to a two.
Whoa.
It's based on the twenty-twenty-three data, um, and that's, you know, that is meeting the national guidelines. Um, the safer, uh, employees do help towards that, uh, do help meet that. But there's only nineteen, nineteen fire departments in the state that are level two, and there's no level ones, so it's, it is something to be very proud of, um, when we're talking about, you know, how our tax dollars are being spent.
Yeah.
Going on to park development, the next slide. We obviously, this, in twenty-three, we, once again, were very active in park improvements. Uh, we added new pickleball courts, we had the Broadway Playground Play Area Park Improvement, the dog park, um, the disc golf improvements. Uh, the welcome park was done last year, a lot of it, and as ribbon cuttings tomorrow night. The, one other thing, the funding for the pool, we, was secured last year, both from the state and the county, um, so staff is trying to be, you know, responsible with our tax dollars, but also trying to maximize what we can do, uh, by seeking outside funding. Uh, we did get a lot of grant funding throughout the year as we continued to pursue. Going to recreation, the next slide. Obviously, with everything, you know, community-wide, society-wide, COVID had a huge impact, but we are seeing that start to return, uh, both our volunteers as well as our recreation programming. Couple things to highlight, the pool had a thousand more, uh, attendees over the last year, so that is returning. Obviously, it's going to be, it's closed in twenty-four, but we are excited, one of the items tonight, that we're talking about again is the pool amenities, and so we are really hoping, uh, especially based on the, the data after, that we look at after, um, New Hope's pool reopened, that saw a significant increase, um, so we are looking forward to that in twenty-five, coming back and being better than ever. Couple other things with, uh, if you go to the next, the public works area, uh, we did, I just did a quick count, we did, just in twenty-three, we did a hundred and, over a hundred and thirty ash removal, um, so we spent about a hundred and seventy thousand, uh, which was double the budgeted amount, um, for, uh, diseased tree removal. And we did get, uh, I want to say it was about thirty-seven thousand five hundred in, in funding for that and grant funding, uh, to help offset that. But as every year, we do important, uh, infrastructure and street improvements and maintenance, um, so these, these are, these are the areas where the tax dollars are going. It's, we, we're obviously a full-service city, um, every year, there's a lot that we do that doesn't, you know, doesn't make this list, this is just skim, just scraping the surface of everything that we do, uh, all the services that we pride, provide and value benefits, but a couple that I just wanted to highlight. Jody, hand it back over to you.
Great, thank you. This slide just identifies some of the factors that's going to be considered in the upcoming budget process. Planned increases to continue to invest in capital projects, increasing the reserves, um, to the fund balance as we discussed last year, planned increases to wages and benefits, proposed, um, new budget software to assist with the, making the budget processor, uh, process more efficient and enhanced reporting, increases in insurance costs, fire service, operating and capital increases, a proposed classification and comp study, and, uh, potential staffing changes or upgrades. And then on the slide here is noted some additional impacts, which include, um, considera- consideration of the property value impacts and potential increase in permits, and, um, just a few other miscellaneous items listed here. This slide we included just to capture the levy impacts of the past years to give you a reference point. You know, as last year, the revised was ten percent increase. This is, um, identified in the most recent utility study that will impact the utility funds. We had an increase in water and sewer of seven percent and storm drainage of four percent. And with that, I'll turn it back to council for any comments that staff should consider as they begin preparing this new budget.
All right, go ahead, Forrest.
This is a question, not a comment. Could you talk a little bit more about utility rate study, and is that based off of what other, other cities or utilities are doing, or is that based off of our needs or a combination of the two, or just talk a little more about that?
Absolutely, Mayor and council. Utility study was done a few years ago, and it's based on the city's, um, projected capital expenditures and being able to meet the capital needs and the operational needs.
Okay.
So they project that out.
Have we ever done a comparative study? I feel, I can't remember hearing about that.
I don't know.
Okay.
I mean. No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
I can clarify, they do take a peek at what the actual rates are comparative to the comparable cities in the area, but not the actual increases, because those will vary, obviously, depending on your needs.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So it's, it's something that's in the study, and you say the last time the study was done was a while ago?
Um, gosh, I, I want to say in twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two. I think it was done in twenty-twenty-one with effective dates of twenty-twenty-two, but don't quote me on that, I'm going from memory.
Okay, I think that's correct.
It should be listed on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, I think in my understanding, that when you do a comparison to other communities, it, it also depends on how they're doing with debt, how they're dealing with some of those expenses. Ours are all on that, that, in the fees, um, oftentimes you'll see, uh, a, a city come forward with some, some type of, uh, cash outlay, whether it be something they save for or something they, uh, they bonded in. That not, doesn't necessarily calculate into this, at least not until it's done. Just, just an interesting side note on that. Yeah, David?
Just a comment, I just really love the list of like accomplishments or things that the city's done. I think the city should brag about what it's done with, with taxpayer dollars, I just think, trying to make a connection between like the tax bill at residency and then what the city does, because it's a really impressive list, and I would love to see that just keep being brought up throughout the process, because I think I asked for it like last year, and just seeing it all written out and everything that's going on is really, 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 really nice. I think it's just, I, I want to keep that going forward, so it's just really, really nice to see.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Yeah, go ahead, Tajee.
Question, how often do we do classification and compensation study?
The last time that the city, uh, conducted a formal, uh, classification and comp study was in two thousand twelve. The, which, so it, we've done internal, uh, comparisons, uh, to the market, you know? The cities, we, we, we share a lot of the salary data, um, but it's due, what, what staff would like to do is actually do a formal, uh, classification and co- compensation study where the, the, the experts go out and actually do the in-depth, uh, comparison and review. One, to make sure that the positions are correctly classified, uh, both for pay equity reasons and just internal, uh, equity, um, and that we're appropriately have people placed, um, in their, you know, based on their job descriptions and their duties, and then, of course, the compensation, uh, that, that is something, uh, if the council saw in the newspaper, just, uh, New Hope just completed one. The, all the cities are, not all cities, many cities right now are doing that because of the last several years, the job market has really been kind of upturned, uh, not just for COVID reasons, but other reasons as well, just with the generational shift. We're, we're facing a lot of challenges here, um, we don't, we don't think we're underpaying. I know the, the police had a, had a large adjustment in two thousand twenty-two. We've been, the city has been trying to catch up, we were behind, um, but, uh, staff has been talking, uh, Kim and I have been talking, and it's something that we do think, uh, would be merited. It's, it's been, you know, twelve years since we did a formal, um, analysis.
Good, thank you. Couple other comments, um, considering we won't be talking about this for another two months, just things that I have been thinking about, about and would offer up to staff as you prepare, uh, kind of budgets for twenty-twenty-five. Generally speaking, personally, and obviously you can take or toss anything I say, uh, but would love to see more optionality, uh, as we think about our budget for next year, and so, to me, what that means is, or an example is, if we had to cut something, here's what I would offer up. And if money more or less wasn't an object, here's where I'd love to invest, and I think we'll probably end up somewhere in between, but I, I would love to see kind of that spectrum, just to help me understand, like, um, yeah, just to think about kind of our budget, the things we could potentially invest in, where ultimately I think we want to go, which will requir- require more dollars, and I would just like to be able to enter, entertain those things as we're thinking about our budget. So would love to just see some more optionality, no idea what that would look like, but just something I wanted to offer up. And then I've also been thinking about, uh, a potential new staff position, which I know maybe sounds, um.
Contrary?
Con- contrary to, uh, maybe things I've said in the past, or, or, and just like the, the fund, uh, the, the financial pressures that we have. But, uh, my rationale is, and, and here's the deal, I'm not asking for a new position, I am just asking that we maybe explore, and I think I may be directly looking at you, Adam, uh, to explore something like this. I don't know what we would call it, but a position that would be dedicated to partially grant writing, I think, as we see in this list, a lot, we have received a lot of grants, and I'm curious how much more we could do if we had someone dedicated, uh, to that, even as we heard about, um, EQC, climate action plans, like, there's a lot of money out there, as, uh, as the presenter shared. So those are the kinds of things I'd like us to be able to explore, and in a way, we could say, you know, if someone can kind of raise X amount of dollars on behalf of the city, you know, the position in theory could pay for itself, not directly, obviously. But then also, as I think about our strategic, uh, priorities as a council, and I've shared this before in work sessions, but I, it is hard for me to see our staff having the capacity, not the ability, not the, but the capacity to actually drive some of our priorities at the pace that maybe I personally would like to see. And so when we think about, uh, a welcoming and inclusive community, there's like some pretty meaty stuff I think we could do, um, and I just don't know if it's fair to ask, I don't even know who I would ask to help drive some of those, um, some of those things. As we think about maybe developing a climate action plan or some kind of sustainability initiatives, again, as I shared in the work session, I'm not sure who we would just, you know, I don't want to just put that on someone's plate and assume they, they'll just figure it out on behalf of the council and the city. And so I'm kind of envisioning this hybrid role where they do a lot of grant writing, and then they like are dedicated to council priorities, helping drive forward some of these programs. I think for us to gain some more traction on, on some of these things, by no means am I critiquing the work of our staff, I think staff has done an incredible job with what they've been given. I just want to explore an opportunity to, um, yeah, add, add another role to, to staff that could maybe help expedite some of the, the plans that maybe we've talked about over the last several months. So something I wanted to throw out there. Uh, and then lastly, uh, just, I, I think a comment directly to, to John Elholm and maybe the council broadly, like, I feel like our park master plan is more so dictating how we are spending our money versus the council maybe driving or dictating the, the master plan, and that's ultimately on us as a council to determine how those dollars are spent. Obviously, we give a lot of money to parks and recreation, and I think it's generally a good thing, but I'd love to see, again, just some optionality of how we continue to fund our park master plan, um, things we might say no to, how we might think differently about that. We've done incredible work, of course, I want us to continue to do that, but I just, we just, I just think we spend a, a lot of money in that area, and so I'd love to see, yeah, some optionality in that space. So I'll, I'll end my little, uh, monologue here, but just some things I wanted to throw out. All right, thank you, Tajee. Anybody else? Forrest?
I, I, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to ask a question, but it's on the page, so I might as well. How this potential staffing changes, upgrades, or adds, is there like, do you have thoughts? Or like, how, how much do I need to start bracing myself, I guess is like, like, a question for that one?
We don't have any specific figures or anything to present to the council. A couple staff have said that there's some positions that are currently part-time that we, we as staff believe that possibly upgrading to the full-time would add value.
Okay.
So that's been the discussion that's going on.
Okay.
So it's just a broad staffing description for that.
Okay.
So when we, when we bring, um, when we bring the budget to the council, um, those would be included, potentially.
Okay.
Staff, the budget opened up Monday, was it?
Yes.
Yeah, today's Tuesday, so staff, I know that, uh, Chief Revering was able to, she's recuperating right now, um, she's not able to be here tonight, but, um, she got some of her budget information in, I don't know that any of the rest of the staff has had a chance yet, so we are very, I mean, we, this is kicking off the budget season, so.
Okay.
We, we haven't had in-depth conversations, um, but there have been, uh, a couple staff members who have said, you know, we're looking at, that's something else that we, we continuously do though with all the staff, is look at, look at the staff and what do we have, do we need to modify? We, we have halftime, three-quarter time, full-time employees throughout the city. If you do look at the, in the audit, there's towards, I think it's the front page, the, the staffing levels over the years, um, it's remained relatively, and these are counting FTEs, it's remained relatively stable, there's only been a, a few positions that have been added. So we are, we're not looking to add, you know, five, ten staff people, um, but we, we continuously modify and look at where, where do we need the, the FTE or the equivalent, work.
Yep, Forrest?
And then to, kind of, a sim- a similar point in there is, um, you know, I think we, we kind of kicked off a lot of that strategic kind of thinking earlier. Is that, how is that going to be incorporated into this? When is that, when are there opportunities? I think that there's a number of things that came out of, you know, things that we all kind of agreed on pretty strongly in that meeting that I know I person, you know, kind of Tajee's point about speed, uh, but like, we would probably like to see maybe in the budget, where is, when is that opportunity? How is that going to be kind of?
That's going to be, so staff, we, we have several budget meetings coming up before we bring it to the council first, and so we'll be kind of taking what the council has had given me and incorporating that into our conversation as to, we have the list of, here's what the council is interested in or has asked for or discussed, how can we, you know, as part of our budgeting, how can we meet some of those, or what else, what else would be needed?
Okay, I guess my question is, do you feel like you have that direction based off of our last meeting?
I, I think there'll be, there'll need to be some clarification or.
Okay.
Fleshing out some of those, those, at, those conversations at the council that we had were still relatively high, very.
Right, that's kind of what, yeah.
So we're, we have to come up with what questions to ask as to what needs to be verified.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure, is because I felt like we had a really good start in some of those work sessions at the strategic level, but we were still probably missing that kind of in-between space before we, anything could actually be, I don't know, I didn't feel like we came up with anything that's like, oh, yeah, this is a budget line, or, you know, something, so I, I just wanted to make sure that there was going to be a time for you to be coming back with questions or further asks, um, for that, so.
I, I will say that, uh, and this is by no means an excuse, but we, just in the last maybe two months, we've had multiple staff. resignations or transitions, um, so that has been taking up a lot of bandwidth from the staff.
Yeah, no, there was no critique.
No.
I was just looking, look at the timeline, okay, sounds good.
It's not been forgotten.
Yeah, there were no critique there, yeah.
All right, Tajee.
So just to confirm, will there be, I assume it would be a work session with council and staff to talk about our strategic priorities? I think that was agreed upon.
Yes.
Okay, before our next budget conversation, before August one or whatever?
Through, yes, through, I mean, that'll be, that's part of the, the next couple of meetings, we'll be bringing that. We're trying to slot it in as to where, where the best time to have that. It may be part of the budget conversation, depending on what, you know, what the budget is looking like, and we're, we're trying to fit it in with, within the, the schedule.
Okay, for what it's worth, I, I think it'd be valuable to have a conversation about our priorities without the budget, just so that we can talk about things regardless of dollars, and then that can inform how we start to talk about dollars after maybe we have some alignment on, okay, what are the things we actually want to go after from a strategic priority perspective?
All right, any more questions, comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Mayor, if I could just, there was one thing that kind of stuck out with the audit that I just wanted to touch base on again regarding the twenty-three expenditures. We, we had to do a little bit more digging in that Parks and Rec uh kind of department or section, uh, significant portion of that was the utility charges and the EAB, uh, the tree removal. The utility charges of the, it was like five hundred sixteen thousand, over the utility charges were about three hundred eighty of that. So it wasn't, I just want to make sure John's not being, but it wasn't the pool even, the splash pad, I actually just found out this week. Splash pad, based on the amount of water that uses, is, you know, thirty thousand dollars a quarter. Now, it's only open for the summer, you know, but it adds up very quick. I think it was sixty thousand for the, the year. So it, things add up very quickly that we don't really even think of. But it wasn't, Parks and Rec was over budget by five hundred thousand dollars. The other, one of the other things on the uh, if you saw the expenditures for the general government or the mayor and the council was like almost three hundred thousand dollars or two sixty uh under. Two hundred, a hundred ninety-nine of that was um contingency, which was put aside because there were unsettled labor contracts. So some of those offset, some of that is planned offset. I just wanted to note that if you look at the audits more, if you have questions on the audit, I think that was mentioned, obviously, please let me know and we'll happy to discuss it with you. That's all I have.
All right. Uh, I want to circle back to Kim. I'm not sure if everybody saw her note. Um, doing, did you want to comment or can you comment?
No, I think that Adam explained the compensation, class and compensation study, um, and the, that we haven't done one since two thousand and twelve. And if you recall, it's also, um, our union contracts will all be up in the same year, twenty twenty-six. And so this will also help us strategically prepare for that, for that process.
Okay, thank you for that. All right.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Tajee.
So we would execute this compensation study in fiscal twenty-five, correct?
We would do the.
I think that's, oh.
Yeah, go ahead, Kim.
Well, I'll, I um, I should let Adam respond to that.
Well, the, the, so we have the, the union contracts, we have three of them expiring in the end of twenty-five, so twenty twenty-six we'll have to have new ones. The, those are set, we don't adjust those wages. So, but we would want the data for those, those negotiations. The non-represented staff, we can, we could implement sooner, um, one of the things, so depending on, because we have all three at one time, that gives the city the opportunity to at least implement it those together. If they were at different times, you would have to wait until you negotiate a new contract or amend a contract. So there could be, depending on when the study's done, uh, if we would have it done in twenty, we're asking, proposing to have it done in twenty-five, and then the implementation would be, it ultimately would be up to the council. If it comes back and there's, you know, we find that we're right where the council wants to be, there's nothing that needs to be done, but at least we would know we'd have that data. If, things can be implemented in twenty-five for the non-represented staff, if the council wanted to do that. Uh, but in twenty-six, as part of the new negotiations for the three labor unions, is when that would be in effect.
Got it, thank you.
Well, I have to clarify a couple things. The, the city council has a compensation plan for the non-represented, and we would follow that plan that you adopt, that the council adopted. I can't remember, twenty, we revised it in twenty twenty-two or twenty-three, I think it was twenty-two. That deals with the not, the compensation plan for the entire city, so we would be following that plan. And then um, the study itself, we're still, we're in the process now of gathering, uh, we're deciding if we're going to start it, start studying it in twenty-four, and it can be upgraded and aged, I guess, for twenty-five, twenty-six. So that is still, we're working, I should just say that we're working on this plan, getting this implemented and going.
All right.
All right. We will move on to our next agenda item then. The next item is Crystal Cove Aquatic Center Project. Our Recreation Director, John Elholm, is here with us. Welcome, John.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here again to talk more about the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center. As I think I mentioned last time, this is kind of a ongoing process. We'll be back every couple of weeks to uh look at the next thing on our list to purchase. But this, this slide we had last time, that's the budget for the project. There's three point three million from the city's long-term plan, two point three five million from the legislative appropriation, and three hundred thousand from Hennepin County Youth Activities Grant, for a total of five point nine uh million dollars. Just pointing out there that it's approximately forty-five percent of the project comes from outside sources, so this is really recognizing that this isn't, this isn't just a city project, but it really is a lot of other uh people, a lot of other agencies assisting as well. This is kind of that long list of things we've got coming. Uh, we have the design and construction contracts approved. Tonight, we're looking at the amenities with platforms and structures, so that's kind of the big thing, that's kind of the next step. Things coming, other amenities, concrete footings, uh, design services, et cetera. So most of these other numbers came from Carl Sanderson, who is helping us with this project. And the estimate right now is that it's uh five point four million, a little over five point four million dollars. That includes four hundred fifty thousand contingency, and that puts it currently, including everything we'll talk about tonight, about five hundred thousand under budget. So, so far. So things are tracking fairly well on this project. To look at kind of what the next steps are, I, I broke this presentation into really two pieces, is one is demolition of existing features, and then two is purchase of those new features. We signed a contract with a construction company to start work on the pool, and we have some things that are in the way. So demolition is scheduled to start here in the next week or so, and um we need to remove some things. So to build a pool, amenities near the pool need to be removed, so that includes the drop slide, the flume slide, lower sections of that, and then the bridge over the lower slide sections. So lately, we've been taking a, a closer look at these uh amenities to see, you know, is it really realistic to bring them back, or should we just be looking at something new? And the recommendation from staff is that we do not keep any of the existing structures, we just move forward and put new structures in. Taking a little closer look at that, the double flume slides, uh, those are, you know, they have a lifespan of roughly thirty years, and they're at thirty-four right now. And they really, um, they, there's, there's a lot wrong with them. The feature's at the end of its useful life, there's this narrow stair structure, you can see at the bottom left, it goes up to the top, and that does not meet code. Uh, lower slide sections need to be removed for demolition of the pool, and then, you know, the idea of putting them back. And then one interesting thing we just realized is that we have this bridge over the bottom of the slides. And if we were to replace the slides, that bridge would not be necessary. So that would increase accessibility around that site, to have a sidewalk around there instead of um the bridge. Uh, so the recommendation here is to replace the slide with new flume slides and structure. Uh, the bridge over the lower slide, uh, demolition of that, the bridge is also thirty years old, it's at the end of its life. That needs to be picked up and lifted out, and looking at it, none of us are sure that that's going to actually live through that. It's not in great shape, so the rec, the recommendation here is to not replace the bridge. And then the drop slide demolition, uh, this one's not quite as old, it is still twenty years old though. To make it, um, it would, it requires a lot of refurbishment, and one thing we realized recently is if you pick something up and put it somewhere else, you have to have the whole thing re-engineered and new footings put in place and make sure that it all is, will work. Uh, the cost then of moving it uh went up a lot from what we had estimated last fall. Uh, so looking at it, refurbishment, where it lasts approximately ten years, uh, versus new slides, who last approximately thirty years. So if you look at that as like a cost per year, um, it's, the cost per year is much less if you do the thirty-year option and spend a little bit more now. So the recommendation here is to replace them with a new drop slide and structure. Uh, so that's kind of the, the demolition part of the equation. The other part is the purchase of new features. So we've been here before talking about basically these three things. A two-meter, three-meter diving platform, um, has been talked about, a drop slide, and then the flume slides, and, you know, what do we do with those flume slides? Uh, the recommendation here is to just, uh, looking at the budget now, uh, there's, appears to be room to just replace all of them. So the diving platforms, uh, it's included in the pool design, this graphic is actually from the construction plans, replaces the current diving board, and the cost of diving platform includes the towers, galvanized tower with powder coat paint, uh, rec step stair treads and decking, uh, which is a much, a more durable kind of decking, engineer drawings, footing design, and then it also includes installation. So we can purchase this through uh the Cooperative Purchasing Connection, which was a, a program that was approved here last meeting. The drop slide is also included in the pool design, this graphic came from our construction plans. Uh, replaces the existing drop slide, the cost of new slide instruction includes the galvanized tower with powder coat paint, rec step stair treads and decking, engineer drawings, uh, step approach. And one thing I'll point out is, uh, when the pool was designed, it said, there's a drop slide, this is how, kind of how it should sit in there. Our drop slide is actually opposite of that, so to make, you know, did, you know, try to figure out a way to make that work, it actually doesn't fit as well as a new one would. And then that also includes installation, so one forty-six, five hundred, also through the same purchasing program. And then the third item is the flume slides. Uh, the location of the slides is included in the pool design, the depth of the water there was, was put there so that it can accommodate slides. Uh, the cost of new slide structure includes a twenty-foot-high, ninety-seven-foot and a hundred fifty-foot centerline slides, galvanized tower with powder coat paint, the rec step stair treads and installation. And then you can kind of see in the background here, there's a yellow and blue, that's the footprint of the current slide. This has a much smaller footprint, so this is not going to be as big a slide as what we have now, but it's uh still a, a pretty nice slide. Uh, but there is room to put a sidewalk around behind it, so that people that are using wheelchairs or, or whatever can get around the site much easier. So uh the cost there is four hundred twenty-eight thousand two fifty, and that's also can be purchased through the same program. And then the cost of the demolition, I mentioned that starting out, uh, but our, um, Weber Recreation was able to work with Kevitt Excavating, who's our local company. They're actually the one that was selected to do the demolition work on-site, so we can expand that contract or, contract with Weber to coordinate that, and they'd make sure all the footings are cleared out where the new ones will go in and things like that. Uh, that's removing the existing slides and bridge, remove footings below ground, dumpsters, material removal, and prevailing wage rates. So the recommendation here is to purchase uh these new items, equipment from Weber Recreation Design through the Cooperative Purchasing Connection. And then Weber did get multiple quotes for uh the demolition work. So the total there is eight thirty-four twelve, and just actually after I got the slides put together, I looked at the presentation I did back in October here. And the numbers are, some are way higher, some are lower, but the bottom line is roughly the same as what we had talked about last October for these particular amenities, so. The drop slide's more expensive, but the other things are a little bit less. So the recommendation is to approve a resolution entering into agreements with Weber Recreation Design to supply and install the following improvements at the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center Pool. That includes a diving platform, the drop slide, double flume slides, and then also includes a demolition of the existing flume slides and bridge, and then B is authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign agreements. So, are there any questions?
All right, I'm sure there will be. John, go ahead.
What I recall, um, when we talked about the, the uh, the double flume slide previously was whether or not we were going to replace our slide or not, we, it might be like an additional, we might just recode it or something like that, and um, getting a new one was going to be like twice this number, I think, closer to a million dollars, I thought.
Uh, six, six hundred twenty-five thousand, is what we had.
What we had budgeted for it, but we thought that.
Well, that's, that was, so back in October, that was on the fence.
It was on the fence, yeah.
Because we weren't sure if it would fit or not. Since then, we received that three hundred thousand grant from Hennepin County,
Yep.
which kind of takes care of the half of that, six hundred thousand, some savings in uh our general construction uh costs, and then the, the cost is actually lower.
And I, I do like the idea that, you know, I mean, that it's going to take up a smaller footprint, and then there's a sidewalk as opposed to going over that bridge, because uh, I mean, I recall using the, the flume slide and uh, you know, being barefoot and going over that bridge was rather, it's uncomfortable for me, you know, and uh, I have a injury that it would, was made evident, not only going across that bridge, but also going up the steps, you know, to the very top of that thing. So I generally would go down once and that would be it, so, you know, so, um, but yeah, so I would probably say I would be in favor of doing a new slide altogether, so.
Yeah, one advantage, one advantage of doing all three of these is that they all would have the same kind of decking and steps, and I actually have a sample in my car, but uh it's uh much more durable and it's much easier on the feet.
Yes, yeah.
Forrest?
So I have two questions about two different features. One is, will, is the new pool design going to have a diving board at all?
No, it has uh
Just the?
Platforms instead of the diving board.
Okay, and is that, that's like, okay, like, in terms of?
Yeah, it actually works out better for pool depths, because when you have the springboard, you can get higher, so you need
More, okay.
More depth.
Okay, I just love diving boards, so I was like, okay. And then the next one's, um, could you, I don't know if you had it, but you said, how high is the existing slide uh versus the new slide?
You know, I don't know how high the existing slide is, the new one is twenty-one feet, so it's not going to be as high.
Okay, and it's not going to be as long either, right? Like, the, the journey down is not as many.
I would, I would assume not, but one of them is a hundred and fifty feet, so.
Okay.
The new one, so it, it just, I think it's a tighter loop instead of the big kind of swooshie.
Okay, I, I mean, the one concern I have is, it certainly seems like a downgrade in um, in the fun level of the slide, especially when we're comparing it to some of, you know, our other outdoor swim places. I'm thinking, you know, like, like St. Louis Park has just like a crazy slide, and I'm not saying we do something like that, but, you know, it's um, if we're spending four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars on a slide, I want it to be like
Cool.
A cool slide, you know, because what I'm thinking of, you know, uh, when I was twelve and like, through, through the teenage years, I mean, it's like, part of the allure of pools like this is, is instilling an opportunity for risk-taking in, in, you know, children as they're developing, and I think that really kind of cool, but also little risky slides are, are a great place to do that, and I, I can't really tell if this is that, but I know that that's something that I'm concerned with, so.
The slide isn't cool enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Especially compared to what we used to have and some of the other pools, so. Didn't think I'd say that sitting back here ever, but yes.
There you are.
There you are. All right, other questions? Forrest, I'm sorry, Tajee.
So where I'm at, I am, I am not in favor of the drop slide, like, I think we should just strike it from the plans. My anecdotal rationale is I, I went to the pool last summer and just to look around, and one of the young people that was working there, I asked, you know, how many folks use the drop slide, and he was like, no one really uses it, so for whatever that's worth, but I think more broadly, that doesn't seem like a really captivating piece of, of equipment, if you will. And honestly, like, the, like, almost a million dollars for the amenities, how I'm approaching this is where can we, where could we eliminate some of the cost while still maintaining the allure of the, of the pool? So that's just where my, my head is at, so that would be my recommendation, just to strike the drop slide from the overall plans. And then the flume slide, again, I feel like that's expensive. I'm not saying we strike the slide, because that's kind of a big deal, but I'd be curious, like, what if we had one really cool slide that would, you know, satisfy Forrest's desires? Like, would, would it be a cheaper option to have one slide that, that maybe was longer or whatever, you know, if we could take fifty or a hundred K, which maybe that's not even realistic? But that's, that's where I'm at, so I would, I would strike the, the drop slide and then are there other options for the flume slide that are cheaper?
Go ahead, John?
Or not necessarily cheaper, but would add coolness to the double flume slide, is what you're?
Uh, both would have to be true for me. Cooler and cheaper.
Well, you're talking about having maybe one that's like shorter, which would, which would be like the so-called drop slide, but then one that's more spectacular, right? That would be the coolest, so it would be cheaper, but yet more.
Yes, if we're speaking in technical terms.
Yes.
Slide terms.
No, I, I am saying, ultimately I'm saying we actually just have one slide at the pool, no drop slide, we only have one slide that is really cool.
I'm still confused, okay. So adding a hundred or fifty thousand?
I think I've lost complete control.
So adding a hundred or fifty thousand to the, to the new double flume?
No, not adding, subtracting. Cooler and cheaper, one slide, I'm just wondering if that's a possibility.
So, so when you say cheaper, you mean cheaper than the two?
Correct. Is it possible for us to have one slide that is less than four-hundred-and-whatever-thousand dollars that is cool?
Oh, that's different than what I was thinking.
I, I would just like to say, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor. That I think having two slides is something that is very important for the pool-going recreational experience, because often you go to a pool with your friends and you wanna race down the slide, you're going in that one, I'm going in that one, who's gonna get to the bottom first, I mean, it's a very key memory unlocked for me there, thinking about that, so that, that's just my two cents there, the two slides.
So just, we did have some different slide options that we ran by the Park and Recreation Commission last fall, and this is the one that had the, the cool factor. I don't think it was actually the most expensive one, I think it's the second most expensive one that they looked at, but it's, so, so some, you know, but that, but that's the challenge, really, is, you know, there's amenities, you know, looking at the budget, you know, we didn't come back saying we wanted to do a million-dollar slide, you know, we kind of said, what can we do that's really realistic with the budget that we have and still have that type of an amenity? So that's kind of where this landed, was still keep, retain the double slides, it's still got a cool factor, you know, I haven't, you know, gone down it, it's not there yet, but, you know, it's, you know, trying to balance the budget and, and, and those type of things.
Good fun, John, go ahead. And then also, I think you talked about a climbing wall or something like that, was that also another feature that?
Correct.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Coming, or is that?
Yeah, those things are, I kind of broke it down into the things that we need direction on, because they need engineering and they, they take a while. Those things, we can kind of buy out of a catalog almost, you know, they're, they're easier to get.
Okay.
So, you'll see those coming up.
All right.
At a future meeting.
Yeah, go ahead, Adam.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, one of the things, just as John noted earlier, one of the things that limited our options, and we dealt with this, with some of the public feedback, is we have a limited space. You know, we, if we were to do a bigger slide or move the slides, even just replacing the flume slide does with the new model, doesn't work as well with the pool. So we are limited without, you know, even just geographically, hope we could go in the parking lot, I mean, this is all part of the conversation when all the design, we didn't wanna really have to impact the building, it, we have a limited amount of space that we have to work with without completely redesigning, we, we didn't have room for a lazy river. I mean, there, there were a lot of things that the public wanted that, well, we just don't have the space for it. Staff wouldn't be recommending anything that we didn't think was fun or what we can afford, if there was a cooler, cheaper option.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I, I understand, and, you know, we can talk further, but this, this, I don't wanna minimize the amount of effort and the, the discussion and analysis and, you know, wrenching over what can we get for what we can afford and how can we get it fit, I mean, it's.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Forrest?
I, I appreciate that, and I, I do trust staff that they are picking the most fun option that's presented within the budget, but I did wanna push that a little bit, obviously, because, but I, I do agree with Tajee if, with the drop slide, I mean, when you're speaking with the consultants, is the drop slide something that's really critical to a pool facility, or is it kind of like, we had it before, so we wanna kind of replace it? What was the kind of discussions there? Because it does seem, I mean, like, yeah.
So, I've seen it used, but I think it really came from there was one, and I think initially the idea was trying to just move it to try to save money, but if that's really, you know, isn't the way we go, then there could be an opportunity to look at something else or reevaluate that. The, the main decision point tonight really is, you know, are we gonna retain anything that needs to move? You know, and if, you know, we can do that and then, you know, do some of the other things, we can circle back on the, on the drop slide, specifically the drop slide piece.
I, I would support that, I, I mean, I don't, I don't support keeping the drop slide, but I'd be interested to see what other options are for that space. As long as it doesn't throw a total wrench in everything.
No, I think just if, just, just staying the one piece out would, would be fine.
David? Just, it would be interesting if like newer pools have put drop slides in, or if it's just like a, like an old thing that just, you know, it'd be interesting to see if that's something like New Hope did or other places did.
So, my comment, I really wanted to main, well, to preserve our contingency, can we do that? Can we do whatever we can to try not to use that? I know we, when we did the police department, that was something we talked about in, and they were able to make sure that we kept it within known parameters.
No, absolutely, and that's, really, we're very conscious of that, and that's why we're not coming here with things that we hadn't talked about before, everything tonight has been talked about here. So it's just staying on that track.
Now, in terms of the drop slide, if that helps with the contingency, I'm good with it.
Super cool. Contingency's super cool.
All right, anything else? All right, looking for a motion. John?
Do I need to state that we're removing the drop slide from the particular amenities? Do I need that, or can I just?
Yeah, you can.
Have a question?
Mayor, members of the council, just one other thing, since the packets had gone out, the city attorney, Tierney, had mentioned something that, regarding the prevailing wages, we'd like to just re, reword a little bit, so if I could ask the council to just pass the motion to pass the resolution, subject to attorney modification, non-substantive modifications, as amended?
You're talking about the?
In addition to?
In addition to whatever, one, two, three, four modifications.
Got it?
Say, just, I think, if I'm not mistaken, in the drop slide proposal, that includes removal and a new slide?
Yeah.
So we probably wanna keep.
The removal of the part, yeah.
Part in there, if that's acceptable to the council.
Maybe I'm not qualified for this.
I think you can handle it.
I'll give it a shot here, so anyways, a resolution to approve the purchase and installation of amenities, but not replacing the new, or replacing the drop slide structure and complete the demolition work at the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center. Does that make sense?
No.
No? It doesn't?
I think we need to amend.
So, okay, so I make a motion to amend.
Where is?
The resolution for the purchase and install, installation of amenities and the complete demolition work of the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center by removing the new drop side structure from the existing proposal.
And?
Attorney.
The attorney.
And.
And the attorney.
Minor amendments to the contract.
Minor amendments to the contract?
Proposed by legal counsel.
Proposed by legal counsel. Perfect, gotta, wait for a second. Therese?
I'll second that.
Make it so.
All right, all members in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay?
That's why they used to have me sit next to, to the attorney, you know, so, I mean, you know, move one down here or way down there, then you get confusing.
Well, I was gonna introduce her during our announcements, but.
We didn't get to it.
Rachel, welcome to the City of Crystal. We appreciate your, your being here, I don't know if you, how long, how long have you been with, with your firm?
I've been with Kennedy and Graven for just over two years.
Two years, okay.
Before that, for twenty-three years, I was with the City of St. Paul.
Okay, awesome.
I know all about charter cities.
Very good, good, good. All right, well, we're glad you're here, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
You got what, a couple hours left here?
I hope not.
No slides.
All right, next, the council will consider reading of an ordinance amending to town, amending the town center plan development. And then we'll have John Sutter, our community development director, to address the council. Welcome, John.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, so I do have the slideshows queued up, but we don't need to go into them because you saw them all on May twenty-first, since the, this is second reading, but suffice to say that Fifty-two Forty Apartments wants to add a approximately twenty-five-by-thirty-foot sport court at what would be the east or right rear corner of the property, if you're looking at it from West Broadway, for their residents, and they require an amendment to the previously approved site plan to do so, and that is what this rezoning PD amendment is about. So with that, Planning Commission did recommend approval unanimously, and we are seeking adoption, second reading and adoption of the ordinance, and then a second action after that would be the summary publication resolution.
All right, any questions? Motion, Forrest?
I move an ordinance amending the town center plan development at Fifty-two Forty West Broadway Avenue.
All right, Tajee?
I'd like to second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say nay? Motion carries. Forrest, you wanna go again?
Yep, so I move a resolution approving summary language for publication of said ordinance.
All right, Tajee?
I'd like to second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say nay? Motion carries. Do we have a third? All right, and then John's gonna talk about the UDC, go ahead.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor, council members, so this has to do with buffer distances and other zoning rules that would apply to not only the sale of edible cannabinoids, but also when it goes into effect, proposed January first, twenty-twenty-five, the sale of off-sale alcohol and tobacco products, but all be subject to the same buffer area restrictions. These buffers are currently in the cannabis, the edible cannabinoids licensing ordinance, and the next item on the agenda is to remove those from that ordinance, but by placing them in the zoning code, these buffers again apply more broadly, so it's not just the cannabis products, but also to the off-sale alcohol and tobacco products, and that, over time, very gradually, zoning the way it works, it takes decades, but ultimately that there would be parity between those three products in the City of Crystal in terms of where they can locate. So this was recommended by the Planning Commission on a six-to-one vote, and you approved first reading on May twenty-first, and we are asking for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance, and then another motion to adopt the resolution for summary publication.
All right, thank you, John, any questions for John? Seeing none, looking for a motion, Tajee?
I'd like to make a motion approving the ordinance amending the Crystal Unified Development Code regarding cannabis business, liquor sales, and tobacco sales.
All right, thank you, looking for a second, Forrest?
Second.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say nay? Motion carries, you wanna hit the next?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving summary language for publication of ordinance number twenty-two-four oh four.
All right, Forrest?
Second.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say nay? Motion carries. All right, John, for the next item, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thanks again, this is the repealer to remove the buffer distance requirements from the current edible cannabinoids licensing ordinance. This is such a short ordinance, we don't need to do the summary publication thing, but we do request second reading and adoption of the repealer ordinance.
All right, any questions for John? Seeing none, Forrest?
I move an ordinance amending the ord, the ordinance requiring a license and imposing regulations on the retail sale of edible cannabinoid products.
All right, looking for a second, Therese?
I'll second that.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say nay? Motion carries. You're just moving right along.
Yeah.
Met Transit?
I think I'll let Adam.
Mayor, I'm actually gonna take this one, as was discussed in the last meeting, staff had been waiting to get some, basically to hear anything regarding several issues regarding the Blue Line. Last Thursday, a meeting was called, staff was directed to draft a letter that we're going to have the council consider sending it and possibly, you know, trying to gain more publicity for some of our concerns. A meeting with the county, with Hennepin County was called last Thursday, that was for today, the meeting, I wanna report today, the meeting was very productive. The goal that was stated today by the parties, by the county, is that the end of July is their goal to have a turnback agreement. We have another meeting on the, on the twentieth of June, which is after our next council meeting, but based on today's, today's progressive meeting, staff's recommendation is to pause with the letter and continue discussions, we, while we are under a time, you know, I won't say time crunch yet, but time is of the essence, so we do, depending on how the next meeting goes, we may need to come back to the council to kind of restart this process, but as of right now, we were very pleased with the progress that we, we received today with the conversation, and we are trusting but verifying what they have said, we, we made some very, we made a very good case, the City of Robbinsdale was there as well, and I would say we have a unified front, the county is now going, the next meeting, they will be presenting kind of their starting point, we kind of talked about the framework, talked about what we agreed on, what we didn't agree on, and it was, Jesse was there, I was there, John was there, and we all felt very good after the meeting. So our recommendation right now is to not discuss the letter that was discussed last time and just pause that, and then we'll, if needed, restart it with the council and take next steps.
Are you confident that all the different issues will be able to be addressed through these meetings?
With?
Well, you're.
All the issues?
Yeah.
There, there's gonna be other conversations that are gonna need to take place. This meeting today was specifically about the turnback and kind of the tangential issues, which, you know, traffic counts, everything that goes into West Broadway and the impact that the Blue Line is gonna have is part of that conversation. There's other issues within the project that we are still working through, that the bulk of this letter, though, the kind of the specific content of this letter, was mostly focused on the turnback and related aspects. um, was mostly focused on the turnback and related, uh, aspects.
Okay. Tajee?
I'm curious, and maybe you already said this, what, what kind of initiated them reaching out for this meeting today? Did they listen to our last?
There were some technical staff meetings held that, uh, John Sutter was a part of. Um, John, if you want to.
Yes, thank you. Um, the, we basically told them at the last, I, Jesse was there too, um, at the last I R T meeting that we were, based on your May twenty-first discussion, that our council is, like, we're ready to start thinking about going public. I use that phrase, right? Um, so, and, you know, we're going to have something on the council agenda for June fourth. And then, was it a day later, we got the email, maybe two, yeah, it was a day, two days later.
Yeah.
No, one day later. It was the next day, we got an email from the county saying, let's meet. You know, picking up the ball after it sat on the ground for almost thirteen months, so. I think, I think we've, they finally took it seriously, is the short answer. And, um, because they knew that something like this letter was going to be on your agenda tonight.
Yeah, I think that's like helpful to know. I, I don't want to resort to tactics like that. But like, if these are the things that get people's attention, like, let us as a council, like, remember that so we don't have to wait thirteen months. It's just interesting, so it's good, I guess.
Yeah, it sure is. Forrest?
I was just going to ask at the meeting, did they, were they more listening, or did they have anything to propose?
It was a discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, of varying, you know, philosophies over turnback, you know, jurisdictional transfers and county policy. You know, what relevant, what exceptions to their policy would be in place? And, um, obviously, we're, we're not at the point of talking any dollar figures, but how, throughout this process, how are we even going to reach those dollar figures, what, what would be appropriate? Um, so it was kind of creating the framework. We, we stated our position very clearly. They left understanding where we were, um, both cities. And they are going to be getting back to us within two weeks of that kind of the opening, so.
Do you have another meeting on the calendar, or just kind of an expectation they'll reach out?
It's on the calendar.
Twenty.
All right, good.
I, I think the, the greatest thing that came out of the meeting that I, that struck me was we talked seriously about actually how to structure the, the agreement in terms of when the work gets done and how do we, you know, it's, it's not all settled, but like, what is the mechanism by which we determine what a fair county pays? You know, all that stuff. Like, we, we had never had that conversation before. That was the breakthrough today, I think, and I was, would you agree with that, Jesse? With that, I mean, that was a pretty significant part of the conversation about how we might structure the agreement.
Yeah, Mayor Adams, council members, Jesse Stru, Public Works Director. Um, yeah, I mean, I think that's kind of the biggest takeaway is we had some very specific conversations. Whether, I mean, Hennepin County didn't say they were coming back and going to meet all our agreements. I mean, we need to be clear on that. I mean, they're going to review and talk with internal staff and review their policy and see if there's ways that they can, um, you know, how, how they would have to amend their policy or justify going outside of their policy constraints. Uh, but I mean, I think they, they did take our conversation very seriously, and, um, we'll see what they propose on June twentieth.
All right. Policies. Let us know if we need to implement any new policies at the city level to combat the county. All right, um, as far as I'm concerned, as long as we call it a pause, um, I think there's a lot more issues that we need to address along the way, um, I'd be willing to move forward in that realm. Anybody disagree?
I think that's good. Yeah, I mean, there's certainly more, but.
All right. So.
I, I think, uh, Attorney Tierney, is a motion to table this item proper, or?
You, you could do it by a motion to table. I'm looking at the, um, the motion there, which would be just, you could just continue the discussion, um, on indefinitely or when staff brings it back.
All right. Um, let's go ahead and continue it then. Um, in this setting, do I need a vote on that? I don't, do I? Just continue it, right?
Well, you need a motion to continue and a second on that motion, and then, yeah, you would still need a vote.
Different than work session. Got it. All right, looking for a motion to continue.
I mean, I'll make that motion.
John, thank you.
I'll make a motion to, uh, uh, to continue unresolved issues related to the Blue Line Extension Light Rail Transit Project.
Looking for a second, Therese?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. All right. Hey, we did it.
Maybe.
So, we do, what?
Said maybe, I'm sorry.
So, a ribbon cutting ceremony for the Welcome Park Play Area and Fitness Circuit will be held on Wednesday, June fifth, at six thirty P M. The Crystal Airport Open House is Sunday, June sixteenth, from eight to three P M. Uh, the next city council meeting is Tuesday, June eighteenth, at seven P M. Uh, that's in the council chambers at City Hall, and via Zoom, city offices will be closed Wednesday, June nineteenth, in observation of Juneteenth. Uh, city offices will be closed July fourth and Friday, the fifth, in observation of Independence Day. July fifth is not a designated holiday, however, we're taking it off. Uh, city council meeting and work sessions are open to the public, and previous meetings are available for viewing and listening on our website at crystalmn.gov. Uh, do we have any other announcements? All right, I have one. Um, I wanted, I wanted to read a letter to the residents of the City of Crystal. I hope this finds you well. Is with mixed emotion that I write to inform you of my decision to retire as mayor. I didn't think there was that much emotion, wow. Okay, um, after serving you for twenty-five years, three terms as Crystal Mayor, or twelve years, and sixteen years as firefighter, uh, serving you has been, serving you as mayor has, has been immense honor and privilege. One thing that I will always cherish. Over the past years, we've worked together to tackle challenges and seize opportunities. I'm proud of what we've accomplished. As a community, one of the highlights of my time in office has been the elimination of bonding for major projects, a move that has contributed to our city finance stability. It's been a team effort, and I'm grateful for the support and collaboration of the residents throughout this journey. As I embark in this new chapter in my life, I'm excited to announce my focus is on a nonprofit business we recognize aimed to support individuals in recovery from drug and alcohol addiction. This causes, uh, deeply personal to me, and I'm eager to devote my energy into making a positive impact in that realm. While I may be stepping down as mayor, I'm very confident in the future leadership of Crystal. Our community is filled with dedicated individuals who are committed to its continued growth and prosperity. I want to express my heartfelt gratitude for, to each and every one of you for your support, your trust, your dedication to our city. It has been an honor to serve you as your mayor, and I am grateful for the opportunity to have worked alongside you. As I look ahead to the future, I'm filled with hope and optimism that Crystal's continued, that, for Crystal's continued success. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this incredible journey. With warm regards, John Adams.
Mayor, if I could say so?
Sure.
I can make a motion to adjourn. Well, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for, you know, for reading that. I, I appreciate your efforts as our mayor, and, uh, you know, I know you and I get along like a little bit, and, uh, you know, I just want to say thank you for, you know, allowing me to work with you on various aspects of this council and, uh, um, just, you know, good luck and best wishes.
Appreciate it, thank you. We still got a half a year, which is about twenty-six more meetings?
Yeah. One, one last thing, is there a second to my motion?
I don't know.
That was a long motion.
For a second. Go ahead, Dave.
I'll second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
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 All say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.